I didn't join the audio. Oh, I didn't think they could see me.
Hey, good evening and welcome to the March 17th Regular City Council Meeting. St. Patrick's Day will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Loquist.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Vote Sean, here. Goodlow?
Here.
Loquist?
Here.
Elliott?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Palmer?
Thompson?
Here.
Okay, item two, two A and two B are Proclamations for Transgender Day Visibility and National Development Disabilities Awareness Month. They were signed, they're in the packet or available online if you would like to read them. We'll move on to item three, which is Awards and Recognition, which there are none, and item four is Approval of the Agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Seconded.
Motion second to approve the agenda as presented, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, two of what aye opposed. That motion passes, consent agenda, page eight.
Move could say the agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, two of what aye opposed. That motion passes, we move to page six A, which is page eighty-three, excuse me, item six A, page eighty-three in the packet, which is a 2025 State Legislative Session Update by Josh Weiss, who is available online. There will be an opportunity for public comment after his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Nice to see while staff, lots of members of the public I saw up before, so nice to see everybody.
Standby just a sec, Josh, we're gonna turn the volume up. That extra three, make it work.
Or cowbell, too.
Most of us are avoiding.
Hey Josh, give us a try now.
Okay, how's this sound, any better?
Better, yes.
Okay, sounds good. Well, it's nice to be with you tonight. There's forty-one days left in this hundred-and-five-day legislative session, and we are more than halfway through the actual process perspective. Last week, what last Wednesday was the deadline to get bills out of their chamber of origin, so that would be the halfway mark from a process perspective. Now we're back into here committee hearings where Senate bills are being heard in the House and House bills are being heard in the Senate. And we'll be doing this until April 2nd. We've seen an incredible number of bills this legislative session, probably more than we typically do, though not as many pass that midpoint cutoff. So the legislature is definitely starting to run into the realization of the budget issues that they have and that they can't pass as many bills as they would like to because they have fiscal impact. We will be in committee hearings until April 2nd and then should be wrapped up hopefully by April 27th, it's supposed to be signee die. We've been engaged up to this point in session with a lot of individual pieces of legislation. The attention is very much going to shift here very soon to the biennial operating transportation capital budgets, which are the major responsibilities of the legislature in these odd number of years. Tomorrow will be the, tomorrow afternoon, the State Economic Revenue Forecast Council will be releasing their revenue forecast for the next four years for the state. That will be the basis from which they they build their biennial budget. And all of the conversation so far has really been around how the state is, does not have the revenue to meet the spending obligations that they have made to date. And tomorrow will be a big piece of information about sort of how how far they have to go in terms of cuts and/or revenue increases. If, you know, you've been watching the news, the conversation has been really very interesting between new Governor Ferguson and his real commitment to finding as many reductions as possible before heading to new revenue increases. And between Governor Inslee's proposal and Governor Ferguson's then second proposal for reductions, they've managed to find a way to cut about $7 billion out of a, out of almost $70 billion budget, but they have another probably five or so that they need to come up with. So I expect that we will see budget proposals from the House and the Senate early next week. We do expect, at least in some of the different proposals, to see what we call a book one and a book two proposal. A book one being what a budget would look like if there were no new revenues, if it was all reductions. And then a book two would be with certain revenue assumptions and revenue bills accompanying it. I think the speculation over here is that the majority Democrats will be trying to build the case with that. Book one, all reductions budget proposal, to build the case for additional revenue. But I don't think we've seen the proposals or have really a solid sense of what those revenue increase proposals will be. So as I said before, I think a lot of the attention is going to turn very quickly here to those budget proposals as opposed to individual pieces of legislation. One aspect that is of particular interest for local governments in general is the Governor Ferguson and now the legislature has picked up the commitment to provide additional funding for local governments for public safety. We are the, this statistic has been talked about a lot, that we are last in the nation in terms of our number of police officers, law enforcement agents for our population. And Governor Ferguson campaigned on that and he's very, been very serious about wanting to fulfill that promise to increase the amount of resources put towards that. So there's, the majority of Democrats have taken up that sort of interest and we have now two dueling proposals, one House bill, one Senate bill, for how exactly different mechanisms to get both $100 million in grants out to local governments, but then different funding mechanisms for local option taxes that could be used at the local level if individual jurisdictions want to raise additional revenue for law enforcement officers. So I anticipate that this is going to be an area of dialogue that we'll be very interested in for the last, last sixty days or so here. I will say for the city of Ellensburg, we've been working with your legislative delegation to try and bring emphasis to the Flood Plains by Design program, where we have a significant grant for acquisition in the floodplain to the west of town. I was gonna say southwest, but it's mostly west. The Flood Plains by Design program is a capital program. We're really hoping the capital budget is not impacted as significantly as the operating transportation budgets by revenue shortfalls. And that's partly because capital budget is funded largely through bonds, which do have to be paid out of the operating budget, but they're not as limited as the operating and transportation revenues. But we still think we'd need to see probably larger than is probably realistic in the Flood Plains by Design Grant Program to reach the level that we will need to get to our projects. So we also made a, just individual jurisdiction proviso request for that project. Also working to try and get some funding for the Mountain View Tennis Courts. And similarly, that's ranked relatively low in the youth athletic field grant program. So we also made a proviso request from our delegation for that project. And then the other major piece that I've been working on is legislation sponsored by Representative Dent and Senator Warnock that would allow creation of a public facility district smaller than the entire county. And unfortunately, neither of those bills made it through. We thought Representative Dent's bill was going to be the vehicle and so Senator Warnock's didn't move as far, sort of through our own volition. But there at the very end of floor cutoff last week, was pushing the working hard, including talking to Democratic leadership to try and get that bill just to run. It was on the floor calendar, it just needed to run. But then it just got caught in the machinations of larger bills at the very end of cutoff and did not make it through. Even as of this afternoon, I was speaking with Senator Warnock about potential of adding that language to another piece of legislation, but it sounds like that won't be happening either. So we'll need to, need to be working on that issue again next session. Other than that, have been weighing in for the city on behalf of, on behalf of the city in opposition to legislation that would preempt your authority to require parking, off, off, or on-street parking for residential projects. This is a priority of actually both parties as part of their attempt to try and increase housing supply and get housing prices down. The requirement to have parking with a project is seen as a cost driver. This is, this is a high priority for the Association of Cities, it's a major preemption issue, not feeling super positive about it. And then have also been, will be, have been and will be weighing in on legislation that would preempt your ability to bargain with your unions on the use of of artificial intelligence, which is a management right, that is, use of technology is a management right that's been really strongly upheld and fought for. So those are a couple of the major issues. And I think, I think I'm just gonna stop there and see if there's any questions or managers, Senator, if there's anything you think I should add to or that I missed, I'd be happy to add.
Sure, thank you, Josh. And just for the audience here, so our, the council has actually adopted a set of legislative priorities to serve as sort of the template for things that we advocate for. And Josh has been incredibly helpful to be feet on the ground in Olympia to advocate for those interests. And when there are bills that have come up, as he mentioned, with the preemption for parking and also the AI issue, and there have been a couple others, he has the ability to sort of weigh in early and to help us advocate for or against those policies that are coming up that sort of are in opposition to your legislative agenda. And so, and the other thing, we haven't been pushing any of our CCA. I think the legislature has sort of backed off this last year and after the initiative did not pass, they're just sort of settling. And we have had some early conversations about maybe next year working with EnemClaw on some legislation to potentially change the the rate for decarbonization that's required under the CCA for the smaller municipal utilities. And so I think the, I think it's 15th District, which EnemClaw is now in, is, there's some, the legislators are looking at how can they potentially help more cities and more communities with this issue as well. So again, Josh has done a tremendous job, we meet on a fairly regular basis. If there are issues that come up, he's been incredibly responsive in order to help us have a voice in Olympia.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Weiss, thank you for the information this evening. We've got some great representation from the city here this evening. So just for a little bit of an education for folks, could you go in a little bit about fiscal notes, how many you've seen, how many has been generated? I know this, you know that I'm at the university, so I'm dealing with fiscal notes all the night, all the time. But just to educate the folks in the gallery, what does it look like on an average week basis as far as fiscal notes coming in? How quickly you have to respond to those, what are fiscal notes? And how does that play into the entire larger legislative session for folks here?
That is a great question, councilmember, very inside-baseball question. You can tell you're definitely working with the process. So a fiscal note is basically prepared by the state agencies when they see a piece of legislation that impacts or has the potential to impact their budget, either in terms of costing the agency money or potentially raising new revenue or impacting revenue that is generated by by the state. As you mentioned, you know, universities as as public institutions obviously are producing fiscal notes for for bills that affect them. But also there is an organization called the Local Government Fiscal Note Office at the Department of Commerce that does their best to write fiscal notes to try and assess the impact of, on cities and counties, ports, other local government entities. I would, hundreds and hundreds of fiscal notes. It really, you know, it's, it's not every bill, because not every bill has a fiscal impact. But as you would imagine, most bills do have a fiscal impact, so almost every bill has a fiscal note. I would say that it is, I think a lot of us that work in the process feel like it's a little bit more of an art than a science. And you, councilmember, you can probably relate to that, that, you know, you're making estimates and so it's, you do the best you can with the information data you have. Some of us that are more cynical sometimes, I think, feel like agencies will maybe estimate that a piece of legislation is going to cost more than than maybe it should if if the agency has an opinion about that bill in opposition to it or vice versa. But again, that's a little bit of a cynical perspective. I, I will say it's not something that I do myself, but it is a part of the process where talking about, understanding what's in those fiscal notes, understanding what the impact of the state budget is, is definitely something that can be used in terms of making sure legislators are paying attention to those impacts and understanding the potential impacts of issues that they're considering. This is a little bit of an aside, but I wanted to add on to Manager Sternoway's comments. One of the other things that we'll be doing and watching for very closely when these budget proposals do come out is looking for impacts, not necessarily just for the city of impact, the city of Ellensburg directly, but for revenue sources like the Public Works Assistance Account or the Municipal Criminal Justice Account, which is a pass-through funding source for for cities to provide public safety. During the Great Recession, the last time we were in a budget cutting exercise, those sources were swept by the legislature and reduced by the legislature. And so that's something that his municipalities will be working really hard to make sure happens as minimal as possible and making sure that the city's interests are represented in that. And that's something that we have on our legislative agenda in terms of just trying to avoid pass, the state passing on costs to the cities. But it's something that we're very much will be reactive to. So I shoehorned an additional answer in there to your, to your question, councilmember, but I'd be happy to answer anybody else's questions.
No, that really addresses it, I just wanted to kind of point out to everyone as far as the amount of information that's being passed to Olympia. Know that not only is Mr. Weiss trying to represent the city and all the things that we're trying to accomplish, this is on top of hundreds and hundreds of proposed bills that have to be responded with, usually within twenty-four to forty-eight hours of a fiscal impact or some sort of administrative impact that ends up sometimes becoming law depending on the bill. So it's just to educate the general gallery as far as that process, if you're not aware.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Mr. Weiss, thank you so much. You mentioned in passing when you're talking about another topic that cuts to transportation. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, our state transportation budget is primarily funded by the gas tax. That has traditionally been the way that projects across the state and the operations of our State Patrol, our Department of Licensing, some of those other agencies that are, you know, working the transportation realm through gas tax and fees. Since two things are really happening in the transportation budget, it is suffering greater shortfalls than either the operating or capital budget. And it's more of a, it's more of a structural problem in the transportation budget. And that is because, obviously, with cars getting more efficient and then people driving more electric and hybrid cars, we're spending less money. Well, I shouldn't say that, we are buying less gas. So the amount of money that is available for the state to build new projects with is just diminishing. The other thing that has happened, so we had a, 2023, I think it was, was the last time we had a significant transportation project package. And even in those two years, the the impact of inflation on those transportation projects has really just broken the bank. So those projects that were planned in the last package are, many of them are going to need to be pushed out in time because the state simply doesn't have the revenue for it. The, the legislature has been contemplating sort of ideas about how to get ahead of, well, maybe not ahead, but how to address this structural problem in the budget. They haven't done anything with that yet, but there's kind of, in all likelihood, going to be this year, at least a proposal in the Senate to to raise some additional revenue, probably from kind of traditional sources like fees and licenses and maybe even gas tax, just to sort of hold steady in the projects they've already committed to. In the meantime, there's conversations going on about how do we raise additional revenues in the long term for the state if if fuel consumption continues to decline, which obviously ironically is one of the objectives of the state from a climate perspective. So it's a big policy area, but I would expect to see a very, very negative transportation budget this biennium.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this issue? Nobody in the audience, anybody online? Okay, thank you. Moved to item six B, which is a Kedetaas County Chamber of Commerce Annual Report. Will be an opportunity for public comment, this is page eighty-five in the packet.
I will introduce this item very briefly. Heidi Behren, Sternoway City Manager, Amy McGuffin here. Our Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce is here and I believe she has Matt with her and I will let them introduce themselves again. But they, so the city has an agreement for tourism services with the chamber and so Amy and Matt are here tonight to talk a little bit about what they do for the city and sort of the state of tourism.
Thank you, good evening, council. Again, my name is Amy McGuffin, I'm the President/CEO of Kedetaas County Chamber of Commerce. And when we first came in front of the council and there was the request of us coming back to go over our tourism efforts, I couldn't believe that I have been in the chamber since 2011. But then I really scroll back and I've been part of the tourism efforts for the city of Ellensburg since 2005. Wow, time has flown. But we wanted to kind of talk to you a little bit about what we do on behalf of the, on behalf of the contract. First and foremost, in case you don't know, we do have nine staff members that are touched by the contracts that we provide for the city. One of the reasons we bring this forward to you is because a lot of times people think that we just do the marketing and advertising to promote and encourage people to visit. But we actually are supporters of the small businesses that are in the city of Ellensburg and beyond. We connect with them on a daily basis to help with their goals and their initiatives of what their business is looking to do. And we try to support them to be sustainable. And that's really important to talk about is because the tourism industry has fluctuations in in it. Some people choose not to travel some year. We have something called COVID and so we have some things that completely shut down our small businesses. Along with that, we do have events and programs that we help support these businesses, not only from the ownership perspective, but also the employee perspective. And so a lot of the events and communications that we provide are specifically for programs that go down all the way to sixth grade. Most of our programs that we try to enhance with the hospitality tourism is teaching them in middle school what what industry careers and choices that they have. I'm not used to it being a PDF. We were founded in 1908, that makes us 117 years old. We have been consistently in Ellensburg as your business association. When we were founded, we were founded by local businessmen. We currently are servicing all the communities in Kedetaas County, so that's why I say Ellensburg and beyond. And we really are about empowering the local businesses and enriching the communities. So we put all of our efforts in trying to support our businesses and the growth of the businesses to which they can make purpose decisions. One of the things that we like to do and we've been really good at in the last eighteen months is fostering that environment of collaboration. With collaboration, there's open minds, there's open conversations and so innovation comes about with a solution. I spoke earlier about our events and programs and I just thought I would share this overview. If you notice in the far right-hand side, we start talking about our summits and our conferences. You may ask, well, what does that have to do with the Contract of Tourism? As you can see, we are teaching our youth. This is where we get involved in helping them with career choices or career pathways. Not everyone is subject to a post-secondary or a collegiate pathway and so we really want to focus on the opportunities that we can help them with in regards to their choices of careers. The other thing that we do is networking. It is powerful in the hospitality industry to know who your neighbor is, your neighbor as far as your small business owners and who you can lean to and get support when when things are difficult or when you need just some advice or some wisdom from somebody else that is experiencing the same challenges. The last two on the bottom, I just want to express that we really support the full capacity of small businesses in the tourism industry. Enterprise Challenge is our entrepreneurship support. This is a business plan competition that we award up to $10,000 to the small business winner. And it's really to help them in the thirteen weeks to get better at their business plan. In fact, we work the business plan so far in advance to which then it becomes a loan product so that they can go to a bank and they can present their business plan and potentially get sustainable loaning, loans or financing. Our Leadership Kedetaas County is a seven-month program and that's when we take upcoming leaders and we show them the behind-the-scenes of our communities and our county. One of the things that we did as a Chamber of Commerce this last year was we looked at a five-year strategic plan. And the reason the importance of the five-year strategic plan is, A, to make sure all the board members are on the same page. You would hate to have leadership and it's all over the place. And so we really needed to focus on what the chamber's priorities were. And I, I put all four of the priorities listings under the categories up because they all intertwine with each other. And when we talk about tourism, we talk about how we market, how we communicate, how we support. But it also means that we are driving economic development. And so these are the the pieces of the priorities that the chamber has put forth to my leadership to make sure that we get, get things done. I want to focus on the tourism priorities a little bit. Obviously, the detailed strategies are right there on the left-hand side, but I want to point out the three bullet points. Ten-year strategic plan, this is a county-wide strategic plan. This is us looking at how do we implement for the next ten years for a successful hospitality and tourism industry? It takes a lot of capacity building, a lot of collaboration, a lot of efforts, but it's all about enhancing the visitor experience. How do we do that and how do we do that effectively? but it's all about enhancing the visitor experience. How do we do that and how do we do that effectively? As we look at our priorities, we kind of break them down into the categories. Um, we are the destination marketing organization or the DMO for the county. Um, and what does that mean? It means that we just promote the entire county. Um, but what it also does is it helps us enhance the tourism efforts by leveraging the campaigns, the partnerships, the events, therefore boosting the local economy and supporting the local businesses. We have websites. We do manage your myellensburg.com website. Um, we try to update and expand that website so it's, um, fluid. Um, it has good information, it's comprehensive. Um, but we're also trying to put some digital aspects in there for some automation so that we can help with the, the digital asset. We continue to manage the visitor information center on, on Main Street. Um, in your packet, we provided you all the nuts and bolts, the statistics, and I wasn't going to go over that today because you have a full agenda tonight. Um, so you'll see that, um, we, we service about twelve hundred people a year that are specifically tourism-related. So we, we, um, track who comes in and what are they asking questions and how are they fielding those questions? So we can break it down if they're asking for trails, if they're asking for small business information, if they're just asking for maps. So we kind of know what the trend of those people are when they come into the visitor center. We've been doing that since two thousand. Um, so we've had the visitor center, um, in the driver house on Main Street since two thousand. We do have a contract this year continuing with the promotional, uh, marketing campaigns. In fact, we just met, um, earlier in my staff. We just hired a, what's called a content creator. She'll be focusing, um, strictly on tourism-related businesses. Uh, we find that a lot of people, um, don't read our newsletters as much. They're a little bit more live and engaged on social media. So, um, that content creator is that subject matter expert. And so she's going to help us through those, um, capacities of those campaigns and refine those marketing efforts. Again, we've talked about the tenure strategic plan, which is, um, a collaboration through all the municipalities in the county. I couldn't leave the evening without going over some statistics, so I just wanted to do some overview for those that may not know. Um, overnight trips. This is a, a digital format. It's called Placer AI. Um, we also use a company called CBSA. It's a long name for, for a company that just manages data. And, um, Ellensburg experiences in twelve months of travel, three hundred and sixty-four thousand overnight trips in Ellensburg, eight hundred and eleven visit nights. So there's overnight trips and then there's visits. So eight hundred and eleven thousand visit nights. But the total visitor spend, a hundred and eighty-seven point one million dollars in Ellensburg. This is Ellensburg specifically. These are traveler spends in restaurants, retails, hotels, gasoline, rental cars. Um, so there's some residual spends that they do. Um, that even includes tickets to events, um, admission to movie theaters. So all of that's involved in here that we can track. Who's coming? Well, obviously we have a lot of Puget Sound, Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue coming to our area. But I think it's very interesting to see that Yakima, Portland, Spokane, Kennewick, and Olympia makes the list. Um, and so we are focusing on how do we gather probably more of our closer neighbors? Um, because we already know that people from Puget Sound and Seattle, they're already coming over. Whether it's, um, getting out to the outdoor recreation or just finding something that's sort of slower pace, they're automatically coming over to our space. So we want to really focus on the capacity of our closer neighbors. Those that are in the Yakima, Spokane, Kennewick area and Wenatchee area because they have similar interests into the activities that we provide in the city of Ellensburg. In the tenure strategic plan, obviously a portion of it, which I might have to say, the tenure strategic plan is in writing. So it's a draft form right now. Um, and so these are some of the assets that have been placed on the inventory. It's not all of them. It's just some of them. Um, and these are things that we look at from an understanding of what are we promoting? What resources are we providing these visitors? And how do we plan that marketing and how do we plan how to manage the visitor? One of the things that we found in the tenure strategic plan is that some of the areas that are Ellensburg beyond, like Roslyn, already have pressure points. They can't take any more visitors. Um, and Cleanellum, right now, they have some growing pains. They also have visitor pains. A lot of them are outdoor recreationists that love the area so much that they're not taking care of the area. So we're really focusing on how do we manage those visitors to take care of the land in which they're enjoying? And so it builds capacity to encourage them to come to Ellensburg or also even further to vantage to where they can still enjoy the outdoors, but maybe it's a little bit further than the mass, um, population that's using our outdoor recreation. Um, just for the time purposes, I know Matt's here to support me, and this is really his project. Um, a lot of times I, I joke around to my staff. They really have to pitch the programs to me, and I'll have to say it took Matt about two years to pitch this program. Three, he says, three. And we're finally doing it. Um, we're talking about enhanced visitor experience. Obviously, you know, not everybody sits at their computers anymore, um, all day. Um, they have smartphones in front of them. So how do we get in front of them on a digital aspect? But how do we continue to support the small businesses and encourage the, the spend in our small businesses? So one way that we have found is digital passports. These are, um, opt-in. They're not, um, they're just a text-based opt-in program to which, um, they scan the QR code. They say, yes, I want the information. And then it gives us a digital platform to update any of the information that we'd like to provide them. So these are passports that we will be using to drive decision-makers in using their, um, smartphone devices. As you can see, we've chosen, um, five products. Craft beverages, dining, shopper or saver pass, CWU or CWU alumni, and then cultural experiences. So these are some of the topics that we're going to be, um, focused on for this year to enhance the visitor experience. We talk about the marketing and communication and how does that work for our community partners? As you can see on the right-hand side, I've only listed a few of our community partners. These are the community partners that were at our roundtable or what I call our marketing brown, um, brainstorming. Um, we're really talking about storytelling. Um, there's a reason people live, work, and play here in Ellensburg. And we really want people to know who they're connecting with when they come to visit. Maybe they'll take a little bit of a, um, a longer pause in the way that they react to somebody. Or maybe they'll slow down and, and really appreciate the way that we take care of our downtown. Or maybe they'll decide not to come because maybe it wasn't a story they thought, they thought were, were going to be out and about. So I just want to make sure that we're talking about the storytelling and the connection of the people that are running the businesses here in Ellensburg and the tourism-related businesses. We are encouraging testimonials and word of mouth. Believe it or not, word of mouth is still the biggest referral to a small business. So we want to take that and digitize that and encourage them to come. Again, that connection. For the time sake, um, you know how to contact me, but that is the end of our presentation. I'm open for questions that I can help with and answer.
Counsel, questions?
Go ahead.
Just a, thanks, Amy. Uh, thanks for the presentation. Um, just a couple of questions. Um, on our agenda tonight, we're, um, going to be looking at the, um, contract staff, the, the, um, building in Unity Park.
Yes.
That you guys are in line to provide. I just wondered, you mentioned twelve hundred visitors at your visitor center. Have you done any, um, estimating on how many visitors might be typically expected at the Unity Park?
Well, if you remember in two thousand and seventeen, when you purchased the Wells Fargo building, we actually managed that visitor center for five years. And, um, when we closed it, um, we did have some statistics of who was coming and who was, um, stopping and visiting. And there wasn't a lot of foot traffic. I'd have to say just because of the way that the building and that parking lot was created. Um, it wasn't really a destination per se, um, for people to come in and, and get information. I do think with the Unity Park and the way that you've configured it at the city, uh, we'll get a, we'll get enough foot traffic of curiosity. Um, especially if you have the creative arts planning that I, I've heard is happening where there's some live music and some different things to do for kids, the games, things to engage people to stay into the park. I would say you're at least the twelve hundred, um, if not a little bit more because you do have some extended hours. If you look at that contract, you have some extended hours that we're going to try this first year. Um, you know, when Heidi and Kelly were talking to me, I brought the statistics. I call it the tick sheet for those that aren't, um, of younger age. Um, the tick sheet is when each person walks in and they tell us what they're looking for, we put a little notch by them. We have that for the entire five years that we ran that visitor center. And so we, um, gave them our opinions of what hours would work best. But for this year, we're just going to do some set hours, see how that works and see if we get some engagement. So hopefully that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. That's great. Um, and then on the strategic plan, the tenure, I guess you said at the end of that discussion that it was in draft form. So that changed my question. Is this the very first tenure plan or are you updating a prior version?
Uh, this is the first that I've been involved in and that I've seen on record.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Amy, you got two quick questions. Of the twelve hundred people that are currently visiting the chamber office, what's the single most requested piece of information that people are asking for right now?
Believe it or not, maps.
Good to know.
And so we are in the middle of redoing our maps because it's outdated. There is a lot of streets that have been added. Um, but yes, they're still looking for the handheld visitors guides or maps.
Thank you. And then the second question is regarding a digital passport. Are all businesses automatically listed in the business, in the digital passport? Or they have to register with the chamber to be listed in the digital passport?
Both. We invite everyone to take advantage of it. Um, but they do have to provide, provide us the correct information. And I say that both, um, we have a great listing and we'll, we'll upload those. But we usually take the time to call each business and ask them to verify their information. So not only are we going to upload it, but there's going to be a form that they can put in as a participant. So hopefully we can get everybody. Uh, but, you know, we, we try and there's sometimes we miss. So we, we, uh, have a really good option that can just give us a call. Everybody's trained in the office of how to, how to update that, and then we'll get it updated. That's what I love about the digital passports because once you print it, it's harder to change. But with digital, you can just go in there on a back end, change it, and then it's live.
All you local business owners, make sure you could check the chamber website, update and make sure all your information is correct. Your success is all of our collective success.
Anybody else?
Yeah, uh, just real quick, Amy. I was looking through some of the website insights and, uh, I would be happy to offer up some of my time. I noticed the, uh, average time with mobile is considerably less than desktop. I pulled up both. I pulled up the website on two separate. One's a large format iPhone, one's a small format. And right off the bat, I noticed some things that could be done to, to optimize that. And I just offered my time just, just to help if you or whoever's running the website would like to, like to help.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, we do, uh, uh, have a website designer. It's way over my head. You know, the, I had a leader, a mentor tell me that, um, I hire people that are smarter than me so that I don't get stuck with all of the items. So Josh, if I could, um, I'll follow up that offer.
Please do.
And then we'll schedule a meeting for both of us to be on that so that the person that does it can get right on it.
Yeah, happy to help.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this issue? Uh, apparently we do have an online speaker. Uh, you want to go ahead and activate?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Spinel Miller, and I reside at six zero five North Anderson Street in Ellensburg. And, um, this marks my thirty-second year in the city of Ellensburg. And for thirty-one of those years, I've been working in some capacity with, um, heritage tourism. And I continue to be dismayed that every entity that talks about tourism per se, not talking about like business promotion and whatnot, but tourism in general, always trots out the old tired browns, what we call the brown signs, you know, the signs on I ninety that said, "Ellensburg's Historic District." And then, Amy, I noticed you put something, you had like a two-word blurb about historic district. But nothing has ever been done, and it's super frustrating. I just think that, uh, we have this amazing resource, and heritage tourism is, um, multi-billion dollar, uh, industry throughout the world. There are people that go on vacations just to see historic sites. And I sure would like to see you do something with that rather than just saying, oh, it's here and then that's it. Like people get there, there's no plaques on the buildings, there's no, um, interactive discussion. Like maybe the people at the visitor center could be, I don't know, trained up or something, something. Because when they get here, if they're drawn, if they're lured by the promise of historic buildings and whatnot, and they get here and they're like, great, but what does that mean? And I think that the business owners would be well-served too if, um, maybe you could do something like select buildings and businesses, uh, or property owners that wanted to participate. Like maybe have a blurb about like what that building has, all the things that that building has been. Like the, you know, the climber building was, you know, the original Woods hardware, or I'm sorry, Ramsey hardware. I mean, the, the things that are cool about these historic buildings aren't being addressed.
I'll respond to that if you don't mind. No?
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, item seven is public comment on non-agenda items. Uh, speakers' comments are limited to three minutes, thirty minutes total unless the council votes otherwise. Uh, they're getting me the lists. Uh, so, uh, each speaker, okay, so, don't identify yourself as a candidate for elective office or make any statements which assist campaign of a candidate or discuss a campaign measure. Um, speakers, writing comments on non-agenda items only address issues that, uh, over which the council has control and are not on the agenda. And, uh, you must state your name, whether you live in Ellensburg, Kidattas County, or elsewhere. State whether you're representing yourself or others or both. And, uh, begin by stating the topic upon which you wish to speak before making your comments. Please don't engage in conduct that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meetings. And please note that our rules indicate that no action will be taken by city council um, at a meeting under which this, a subject is brought up, uh, during, uh, this portion of the meeting. Teresa Plou and transparency and video recording is the topic.
Let's see. RCW forty-four-two point three zero, zero, one, zero, um, addresses transparency and why it needs to be there. The legis, it is known as the Open Public Meetings Act. You're probably very familiar with it. The legislature finds and declares that all public commissions, boards, councils, committees, subcommittees, departments, divisions, offices, and all other public agencies of this state and subdivisions thereof exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of this chapter that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. The people of this state do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies which serve them. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed and informing the people's public servants of their views so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. For these reasons, even when not required by law, public agencies are encouraged to incorporate and accept public comment during their decision-making process. Um, I've been engaging with the city council now for maybe, um, four years. And I encourage to double down on our commitment to transparency to the people in this community. Um, we're still at a loss on, at least I am, on how to be able to, um, allow people to be able to know what's going on in meetings that are happening in the middle of the day. I went to the DEI commission meeting and, um, I spoke on behalf of, of legal immigrants.
I went to the DEI Commission meeting and I spoke on behalf of legal immigrants that I knew who had come in here through various programs and what their views were. And they very graciously said, bring them on down, tell them to come to the meetings, but it's the middle of the day. And I pointed out, a lot of these people don't even know how to engage openly in these public meetings and it's at a wrong time of day for them. I really would like you to consider tape recording, video recording, all the commissions and the meetings and explaining to the public at some future date how we are going to hear what's going on in the committees and the subcommittees, the departments. I know there's subcommittees of, because I go to these meetings and I hear there's subcommittees and I'm going, well, how do you get invited to a subcommittee? It feels like they're closed to the public. And I would like that to end and I would really like to encourage us to come back, revisit our budget and put in there the money for being able to do tape recordings that more people can engage and hear what's going on, okay? And bring their ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak? We do have somebody online. Fennel, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. And your application to speak was made before the 24 hours, but I just need to confirm what you want to speak on.
The elephant in the room.
More specific.
I'm sorry. It's about how national events that are absolutely au courant are influencing everything for what Josh was talking about to what Amy's talking about. And at least to the best of my knowledge, okay, sorry.
So go ahead. Your three minutes is starting.
Fennel Miller, I live in Ellensburg and I'm actually speaking for eight people who I've been chatting with about this. Do you need their names?
No.
Okay. We, I am, just for those of you who don't know me, I've been very involved with the city. I was on council, I've been on statewide commissions. I know how government works. I appreciate the budgeting process, but I am terribly confused about how the goings-on in Washington DC right now are going to impact local cities and counties in Washington. Like I know that a lot, like the transportation plan includes a lot of federal highways dollars that are typically granted to WashDOT as pass-through money to local cities and counties. And same with tourism. Like tourism, what's going on right now is, it's been all over the news for the last three days about how record numbers of people interviewed in Canada and Mexico and Europe have said that they are foregoing trips to the US for the next four years. You know, obviously pending change or what have you. But I just, I feel like the citizens don't understand how this is bottom line affecting the city of Ellensburg and our budgeting process. And you've done transportation plans and capital planning project plans and all the rest of that. What happens if none of those federal dollars come through? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else online? Nobody else in the audience? Okay. Move to item 8A, which is a public hearing to consider application for CDBG grant for Library Hall Homes HVAC replacement with a potential resolution. And I have to read a script. The purpose of this public hearing is to review community development and housing needs, inform residents of the availability of funds and eligible uses of the state Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program, and receive comments on proposed activities particularly from lower-income persons residing in the city of Ellensburg and Kiddatass County. The public hearing is now open and we ask for your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone will be given an opportunity to be heard. The city clerk will be making a recording of the proceedings. If you wish to participate in the hearing, you must raise your virtual hand on Zoom or press nine if you're calling in. State your name and address, indicate whether you are speaking for yourself individually or as a spokesperson for a certain group or both. Speak slowly and clearly. Only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. Testimony must only address the matter under which is considered, under consideration in this hearing. Any staff questions are to be directed through the council. Each person will have the opportunity to address the council for an initial period, not to exceed five minutes. If more time is needed, it will be made available after everybody has had an opportunity to speak. And before we begin, is there a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lily Pry, Housing Program Manager. The Ellensburg Public Library HVAC system was installed in the late 1960s. It is difficult to service and overdue for replacement. As you all know, the library is a critical community resource that serves city and county residents beyond the city limits. The Hall Homes Community Center on the other side of the building has a separate HVAC system that was installed in 2012 with an expected useful life of 15 years. So it is scheduled to reach the end of its planned service life in 2027. The library and Hall Homes Community Center also serve as warming and cooling spaces for community members during times of extreme weather. Staff has identified the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG program as the best available complementary source of funding for the needed HVAC replacement work. This program funded by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development supports projects that principally benefit low and moderate income populations. Community facilities like libraries and community centers are eligible for support through the CDBG General Purpose Grant Facility based on project readiness. For small communities like Ellensburg, this grant facility is administered through a balance of state process by the Washington State Department of Commerce, which passes through these federal funds. A requirement of application for this grant is having a grievance process in place related to use of CDBG funds, which is proposed as Resolution 2505. The suggested process would be to direct complaints to the Community Development Department for a decision within 14 business days with escalation to City Council for a hearing and discussion if not resolved. This public hearing was advertised in the Daily Record on March 1st and a news flash notice has been posted on the city's website. The clerk has not received any public feedback on this grant application proposal prior to this evening. And next Keith can tell you more about the budget for the proposed grant application.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Keith Bassett, Assistant Finance Director. As you know, the city faced a tight 2025, 2026 budget and cannot fund the entire planned Homes Community Center Library HVAC project with current resources. The city has budgeted approximately $347,000 for the project and that is the balance of the 2017 capital improvement bond construction cash. Estimates for the work range between $900,000 and $2 million, depending on the scope of the replacement work, whether it's the library and/or Hall Homes systems, like-for-like or switching from natural gas to electric for heating and degree of additional ducting work. And that's based off of a consultant assessment performed in 2024. The CDBG program provides an opportunity to bridge the current funding gap for the project so the city can address the urgent and longer-term heating and cooling needs of the library and Hall Homes Community Center. This is the only funding source that staff has identified that would support the project at this time. Although other city facilities also need attention to their core systems, the acute need for the library facility and specific parameters of this funding source align for this project to pursue these funds. The preferred application option would request approximately $1,700,000 from the CDBG program along with the city's budgeted $347,000, which would replace the HVAC systems on both ends of the building and allow for reductions in the city's carbon emissions related to operating these facilities in line with the city's strategic vision and state policy. If successful in obtaining these funds, federal contracting and procurement requirements would need to be followed. City staff are experienced with these requirements and the cost estimates for the grant application reflect about 15% increase to the estimated costs to ensure compliance with the federal, federalization of the project. Staff has met with Commerce staff and it appears the city is, would not be unexpected to be successful with the application, encouraged to apply to obtain these funds for the city. This has been a team effort to bring forward and identify this intergovernmental funding opportunity. In addition to Lily, we have Hunter and Josephine representing our facilities team and tenant department here if you have questions during the appropriate portion of the public hearing. At the conclusion of the public hearing, staff recommends a motion to authorize staff to apply for the CDBG funds for replacement of the Ellensburg Public Library and Hall Homes Center HVAC systems and adopt Resolution 2025-05 describing the grievance process related to use of CDBG funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Floor is open to testimony from the public. Anybody, does anybody from the public wish to make comment on this matter? Same rules, except you get five minutes.
Teresa Plou, Kiddatass County resident. I looked up, I'm assuming these are Washington State Community Development Block Grants. They're from Washington State Grants. Anyways, okay, I'll read it. If it's not relevant, then just throw it out. Washington State Community Development Block Grant is a federal grant program administered by the US Department of Housing, Urban Development that provides funding to small cities, towns, and counties to support community development projects that primarily benefit low and moderate income residents. It seemed to fit your description. I'm going to mention the elephant in the room that Fennel Miller mentioned earlier and it is that this state in this town is in danger of losing its federal grants. So these are all good to put in for proposals and apply for and we have to keep going on, but we have to come up with alternatives to take care of these. And I don't know what creative solution the city will have for that. We've got local talent. We've got people that would donate their time to repair old and failing systems. And I don't know.
Teresa, I'm going to have you stick to the actual measure, which is whether or not we pass this resolution. I recognize you're coming up with a backup plan.
You pass it. Good luck with the rest.
Jennifer Patterson, Kiddatass County. So I heard, which was very smart, the Climate Cares or Climate Change, whatever you want to call the act, the high end of that. So this is, I'm really happy that Delano will be hopefully in on some of this because we need to keep the natural gas heating that you have there to switch all that out to electric is going to hit you way over your $2 million mark.
Anybody else in the audience?
Yes, sir. My name's Chris Carlson. I'm Kiddatass County. I've been in the utility business since I got out of high school. And again, I'm hearing, let's get rid of gas and add more electric meters. There is, where are you going to get it? Coal-fired plant out of Montana? And that's the second time tonight I heard the man with the legislature saying, oh, we're pushing this green, we want you to drive green cars. Oh, but now we're not getting the gas tax. That's like, we want people to quit smoking, but then we're upset because we don't have the tax. I'm hearing this again and again, let's get rid of gas and more electricity, but where's it going to come from? And how much is it going to cost? And all that infrastructure is already here. We're using it now and now we're saying, let's get rid of it, bring in more power. Where are you going to get it?
Anybody else? Anybody online? Okay. Okay. Does staff have anything to add? Council, do you have any questions of staff or the public? Okay. The public testimony portion of this hearing is now closed. Council may begin its discussion and deliberation.
So regarding a measure at hand as far as the HVAC for Hall Homes.
Hang on a second. Yeah, let's put a motion on before we start discussing.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move to authorize the staff to apply for the Community Development Block Grant Funds for replacement of the Ellensburg Public Library and Hall Homes HVAC Systems and adopt Resolution 2025-05 describing a grievance process related to the use of CDBG funds.
Second.
Motion second to authorize for the CDBG grant for the replacement of the libraries and Hall Homes HVAC systems and to adopt Resolution 202505, which talks about a grievance procedure related to that similar grant process discussion.
Yes. All right. So I hear some sidebar conversation regarding natural gas that'll come along later on in the agenda, but specific to Hall Homes is a good project in the fact that we're trying to leverage 83% of the cost from grants. Now granted, I hear people concerned as far as federal level and all those kinds of impacts. This is happening across the country in every organization, every agency. We have a responsibility to try to maintain our operations and hopefully have a backup plan, but if we try to plan out every single scenario of which federal funding will go away versus which will not, we're going to be wasting our time and our efforts, our staff resources as far as operating in the city as far as things that may happen. So to the best of the ability, the city staff gives us these recommendations so that we can keep taking care of these important buildings like our library. Our library is used by our youth, by our elderly, by a lot of people in our community. And this is really about preservation of those systems. We have the opportunity to take advantage of funding while it's still there, so we're going to do that. And so that's the recommendation that I have for us. Now, if there's something that comes up later on and this goes away, we're going to have to address it, just like every other piece of legislation that's out there. So I get some of the concerns that folks have spoken to, but I would say just keep calm on those. We can make our decisions whenever we have federal mandates that change us, but as it stands today, if it's available to us, we're going to go for those free funds to be able to help us take care of our community.
Anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Two vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Item 9A is potential second reading of ordinance 4957, which regulates banners, sidewalk flags, and decorations in the city's rights of way. There will be an opportunity for public comment. This is page 111 in the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Terry Weiner, City Attorney. As you stated, this is the potential second reading of ordinance 4957, which would regulate banners, decorations, and sidewalk flags in the city's rights of way. You heard this for first reading at your last meeting on March 3rd. This originated back in 2022 following a request from Rotary to use some of our light poles for some banners for a fundraiser event they were holding. That led to literally two to three years of going through the process of trying to develop this ordinance. Part of it was delayed by a US Supreme Court decision that came down shortly after the issue was raised. So we had to do some analysis of that. We also put together a stakeholder group, as stated in this, in the agenda report, to weigh in on some of the issues and provide some suggestions as to the contours of the ordinance. And we held at least three study sessions with city council as well over the past few years. All of that resulted in the ordinance you have before you tonight. At the first reading on March 3rd, there was an amendment that was proposed and did carry the vote to remove a section on commemorative flags. So the ordinance you have before you tonight has deleted that reference as well as some of the references to commemorative flags that were in the, where for sections in the introductory portion of the ordinance. So with that, staff is recommending second reading and adoption of the ordinance and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions of staff? Hearing none, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? This is a three-minute one.
Good evening. My name is Candace Comfort and I live in Kiddatass County. I came tonight not to talk about a problem, but to praise city council for their wise decision on removing commemorative flags from proposed ordinance 4957. As stated by Councilmember Beauchamp at the last meeting, and I quote, "I think that on city property and flag poles, that the only flags that should be flown should be the American flag, the Washington State flag, and the POW flag. I think having them, commemorative flags, flown on city flag poles is a mistake." Not only did Councilmember Beauchamp see that this was a wise course of action to take, she kindly verified it again with me the Wednesday after the city council meeting when we had a conversation about it and how she feels strongly that these should be the only flags flown on city flag poles. Along with Councilmember Beauchamp, I want to thank council members Palmer, Thompson, and Mayor Elliott. I applaud your insight into this matter and for seeing that the only flag that represents all Americans is the American flag. Also importantly, we want to acknowledge the state we live in and those who have been prisoners of war or gone missing while fighting for our country. We hold these three flags in reverence and they deserve a place of honor and respect without having to compete with the priorities of individual groups or causes. These flags unite rather than divide us. These flags unite rather than divide us, and I'm thankful for the council's discernment of that. While there are many causes for which commemorative flags might be flown, there are also other ways to educate the public on them. We do not have to detract from the reverence that government flag poles hold to do this. Thank you for your wise decision to make commemorative flags, to take commemorative flags out of proposed ordinance 4957, and for keeping our flag poles for government flags only. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Adriadano, Kitata County, 30-plus years resident, representing myself. I was also present at the March 7th city council meeting where the flag ordinance 4957 was initially read. At that time, city council member Sarah chose to strike a section of the ordinance stating that she felt the American flag, state flag, military branch flags, et cetera, should be the only ones, the only flags flown on city government land. It passed four to three. I then participated in the DEI Commission meeting on March 11th, where Board Member Goodlow stated that she was upset with how the flag ordinance had been handled and that she wanted to fly our flag at Unity Park. My understanding of the DEI Commission is that our flag would be referring to the LGBTQ+ flag, the pride flag. In the final public comment, Councilmember Sarah stood up and apologized with how it had been handled and stated that she had always been fighting for their cause and was hoping that it could be fixed. Upon hearing Sarah's apology, I was disappointed because I felt that Councilmember Sarah's purpose during the first reading of the ordinance 4957 was because she felt that the American flag is the one that belongs on government property. I would have to agree with her first statement. I felt that when they listed the commemorative flags, that there was a vague gray area and that flags that might not be the unanimous voice of the community would be flown. A flag is a form of symbolism. It provides a primitive but effective way of communicating ideas. The American flag, for example, is a symbol not only of solidarity and national unity, but also of the ideas that characterize the society that has chosen that emblem. I think that flying flags above government buildings and on government property is a distinct honor that should not be bestowed upon a divisive or political movement. Local government does not want to create a private forum for private speech by deciding on its own initiative to fly a third-party flag. A U.S. flag is a powerful symbol of pride, and it is fitting and respectful that only the U.S. flag be flown or displayed at U.S. facilities, both domestically and abroad. The U.S. flag is a symbol of justice, liberty, and democracy, bringing together all Americans and their values, which are the bedrock of our great country, shared by all American citizens, past and present. Proudly speaking, the First Amendment restrained the government from restricting others' speeches, but it doesn't apply to the government's own speech, and that most definitely needs to be a uniting voice, not a voice of decision and dissension. The pride flag has become a flag that segregates, that sorts people into groups, that has become a divisive movement of oppression, not built on merit, individualism, strength, or unity. Let's focus on what we have in common. Let's fly the American flag.
Anybody else?
Julianne Clement, Kitata County resident, speaking for myself. I, too, had concerns about the mention of commemorative flags at the DEI meeting in contrast to Councilmember Beauchamp's very convicted reasons why she felt that that should be removed, stating that she did not think that any flag except for the American flag or the government flag should be flown on city flag poles, and that whoever brings that to the city, whether it is a commission or one of the council members, I think it should be removed. Contrast that with the March 11th DEI meeting, and she had said, why did I remove that section? And that she was new at this and that perhaps she should have done something different, like just had it table, and that she is an ally and a friend of DEI, and quote, "I have your back." So, I'm very concerned about how much influence actually does the DEI Commission have on council members? And how is it compared to how much influence the citizen stakeholders have? I yield back.
Anybody else? Anybody online? Okay, counsel.
Some comments? I'll move first.
Yeah, let's do the ordinance first.
To conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4957 regulating banners, sidewalk flags, and decorations in the city's right of way, as amended by counsel at first reading of the ordinance.
Second. We have a motion second to conduct second reading of ordinance 4957, which regulates banners, sidewalk flags, and decorations in the city's right of way, and this is as amended at the first reading of the ordinance on March 3rd. Now, is there any discussion?
I have a comment to make. I appreciate the comments from community members. I am the chair of the DEI Commission, and I feel like, I believe that this, if we pass this policy tonight, I believe we miss an opportunity to have a commemorative clause in the flag in this policy. But, but I think we need to vote no on the second reading and send it back to the staff and the committee to bring back very specific language that would lay out what flags can be flown, the date, the timeline, what it commemorates. I understand the concern about the pride flag, but the pride flag is not the only commemorative flag that could be flown at Unity Park. We have a Black History Month. We have Native American Heritage Month. We have Developmental Disabilities Month. We have Irish-American History Month. We have Hispanic-American Heritage Month. We have a lot of flags that could be flown as commemorative for groups that have spent a lot of time and energy in our, a lot of time historically in our community that have contributed a lot to the development of Ellensburg and to the culture that we, that we have today. So, that was the intent of adding the commemorative section. When we discussed it on March 7th, we did not discuss those kinds of implications that were there if we took that clause out. We miss an opportunity to celebrate groups that are very important to this community from a historical perspective and that the DEI Commission would like to honor. So, I urge counsel to rethink. I, I think we miss an opportunity, I believe we could have a really good ordinance, a good policy, that would allow commemorative flags to be flown. And I would encourage counsel to vote no on second reading and send the ordinance back to staff and to the committee for additional work, if they could come back with more specific language about what flags and lay out a process that we can all see exactly what we're, what we're looking at. We do that, and you still don't like it, then you can always amend it again.
Any other discussion?
I just, I have some.
Go ahead, Sarah.
Sarah, okay. So, I, you're all correct. Thank you for putting that in front of us. I wanted to say that I did go to the DEI Commission. It's not a secret that I am a supporter of our DEI Commission. I state that proudly, but I do stand behind what I did by asking to have that removed in the beginning, and I will stand by it now. Again, I truly believe that on our, on our city buildings, that we do the three flags that I mentioned before, and as it was so eloquently put tonight, that the American flag does represent us all. And so, we, I don't want to close the commemorative flag issue because, like Nancy Goodlow just said, it, it is a huge part of our community. I would like it to be left open for discussion at a later date, and possibly the Unity Park, you know, named solely, you know, maybe that would be a place where those flags could be flown. But I stand behind my decision on the city buildings that they, it should be removed. I, I support restricting the city buildings to, to the three flags, but, so I went kind of down a path of, of trying to fly the Tree City USA flag, celebrating the fact that Ellensburg was the first Tree City USA in, in the state of Washington. So, I was trying to figure out how to amend it to just fly it at the, the flag pole on Fourth and Ruby that is not at a city facility, so it doesn't really represent government in the same way, but it is in the right of way. But I learned today, that is not owned by the city, even though it is in the city right of way. So, the advice of staff is, is that we could fly the Arbor Day or the Tree City USA flag at that location with an agreement of the folks who own the pole, and they are amenable to that. So, I guess I would like to, to proceed with that path for that particular flag, and it would be flown all year round, so you're not, you don't have the expense of putting it up and down.
Let me ask a question. Are you, are you making an amendment to the ordinance?
I am not. I'm just, my concern was, I was excited to be able to fly that flag for the commemorative flags, and since we did away with that section, I was trying to find a solution of how to fly that flag. And, and potentially, we have one, but it takes a contract with some outside people.
Counselor Palmer?
Yeah. So, we talked about this last week or last meeting, and I'll kind of bring up the example that I discussed last time. On the screens before city council was a display of the different types of banners and flags. Just to clarify for everyone that was not here, there's a difference between the sidewalk flags, which has been historically been the Boy Scout America, American flags, and then the vertical banners that are listed in several different locations. Even though you can't see it, there are well over 30 vertical banner locations. So, to that example that I, that I talked about last time, Girl Scouts of America wants to do an event downtown at Unity Park. They'll be able to, be able to put up the vertical banners. If it happens to align with the same day as a federal holiday, American flags would be on sidewalks. At Unity Park, Girl Scouts could have their banners up, pedestal portable ones. They could also have banners up behind the background of Unity Park and have those celebrations. So, I felt that between the over 30 vertical flags displays that we could have, or vertical banner displays that we could have, plus the individual pedestals, plus the fact that you could have things, say, in front of a stage or behind a stage that are representative of what you are there as far as organization. It, to me, compels all the things that are protected by the American flag. And so, I think that's the balance that we have with this. So, my position is still the same, but if you did not get to see last time city council and didn't get to go through the actual documents, please look at the maps so you can see the different types of flags and the amount that are in our community. So, that's it.
Yeah. First, I want to say thanks to Councilmember Lilaqueston doing the research on that flag pole and determining that it's a private flag pole, and I am 110% for private speech. That's such a first, that is the core of the First Amendment, and I, I think that ends up being, for the, for the Tree City flag, a great way of, of putting it up without walking into government speech. So, thank you for doing that research and finding that out. I'm a big supporter of keeping it to the American flag, the Washington State flag, and the POW flag. I think, you know, the American flag should fly above all. It's what unites us as citizens in a country. There are plenty of ways to have other speech, but I think, you know, the last thing I want to see our flag, our government flag poles become our political totem poles, and it risked that. The commemorative flag section did risk that. And then, there was a lot of vagueness in it. What is a political flag? I asked that at the first meeting because one person's political flag is another person's supportive flag. When I see the protests downtown, I see, you know, everything from pride flags to upside down American flags to, to whatever, and so, so who's determining what's political? And I think it would come down to the political bent of the council, and I don't think that serves the citizens going forward. So, I'm, I'm going to, again, I'm going to support the, what's before us in the second reading as is, and I hope that we continue to maintain reverence for those three flags.
Can I call it again?
Yes.
I appreciate everyone's position and the things that you've said. I have enough confidence in our staff that we can do this right. I appreciate, I also don't want to have political arguments up here over a flag. Okay? This city, four years ago, adopted an ordinance that created a commission that was in task with the job of helping raise awareness of the marginalized communities in this city. The communities that have historically been not involved with city government, with city work, they've not been involved in their cities at all. And there is a tremendous appreciation for the talents and skills and experiences that these communities have that are not being taken advantage of by the community in the business sector, in the educational sector, in the cultural sector. So, we are committed at this point to honoring these groups. If you do your history and you study the history of Ellensburg and how it was started, you would see how these groups have played such an important role. This building sits on native land. That's the commitment that the commission is trying to help the city realize. We're not trying to be political. We're not trying to express disunity or, or promote disunity in this community. We're doing exactly the opposite of that. And it's just really important to me to remind the council of who we are and what we said we were going to do. And approving the ordinance at this point the way it is cuts off an avenue for that. Instead of being angry about a Native American flag flying over on a city flag pole at Unity Park, it should give you an opportunity to educate your kids about what that means to this community. That's where we're coming from on the DEI Commission. That's where, that's why I'm asking counsel to rethink, and let's try one more time to see if we can't get this right. If we can't get it right, we can't get it right, but we won't know unless we try. That's why I'm asking you to do tonight.
Because I'll close out. I'm, I'm going to keep my position. I think that, you know, in many ways, we're chasing at windmills here, and we're trying to make something perfect, and there is an avenue for this type of expression. There is this, there are avenues for this type of acknowledgement, and, you know, I do believe that the flags that sit to my right are sacred and should be to everybody who lives in this country. And part of living in this country is you get to choose whether different flags, you know, represent you and, you know, are something that you want to honor in the same know, represent you, and, um, you know, are something that you want to honor in the same way. And so, I, I guess that's about it. That's all I got. So, any other discussion?
I want to make, I want to make it very clear, that those three flags are important to me, and they're important to the DEI Commission. Those three flags give us the chance to do the work that we do.
Will the clerk call the roll?
Bochum.
Okay, before we do it now. I'm, because I want to make sure I'm getting it right.
Yes is the ordinance as it's, as it's presented tonight?
Yes.
Goodlow.
No.
Lillie Queston.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington, relating to regulation of banner sidewalk flags and decorations in the city's rights-of-way, and adding a new chapter entitled 3.44 Banner Sidewalk Flags and Decorations in City Rights of Way, to Title III of the Ellensburg City Code.
Okay, the next one's not going to be quite as interesting. Nine B is ordinance 4958, potential second reading and adoption. This is a supplemental amendment, amendment to the 2025, 2026 biennial budget. There will be an opportunity for public comment, and this is page 131.
I don't think you should take that from him.
It's not going to be as interesting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Keith Bassett with the city's finance department. This is a routine budget ordinance, supplemental budget, that principally carries forward unspent 2024 budget into 2025, 2026, to allow for project completion. Additionally, the ordinance adopts a few other amendments to reflect changes in operational requirements and capital project plans, since the budget was adopted. Staff presented a summary of the items at your last regular meeting in advance of first reading of the ordinance. Since first reading, staff identified three other items to include in this first supplemental budget. Carry forward of historic preservation grant award from 2024 to 2025, as approved by council in December 2024. Carry forward of unspent balance of the USDA Fish Food Bank Warehouse Expansion Grant from 2024 to 2025, and an addition of $524 for the council community grants to reflect the awarded amount. Detailed figures for each item by fund are included in Table 1, which begins on page 133 of the agenda packet, and a summary of all items by fund are identified on Tables 2 and 3 of the agenda packet, which are pages 135 and 136. Of the proposed additional combined expenditure authority of 9.5 million for both years of the biennium, approximately 8.3 million is carried forward of unspent budget from 2024. For each budgeted fund, the proposed amendments maintain the anticipated 2025 and 2026 ending fund balance within the fund balance policy thresholds. Staff recommends a motion to conduct second reading and adoption of ordinance 4958, amending the 2025, 2026 biennial budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council questions or staff? Hearing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Bochum.
Yes.
Goodlow.
Aye.
Lillie Queston.
Yes.
Miller.
Aye.
Palmer.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Elliott.
Yes.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Ellensburg, Washington, amending the 2025, 2026 biennial budget for the city of Ellensburg, Washington, as set forth in ordinance number 4950, to adjust appropriations in the city's funds.
Item 11A, page 141, affordable housing agreement and associated documents for revised proposal for First and Pine Affordable Housing Project with the city's contribution of property.
Good evening, Mayor and council of Lilyfry, Housing Program Manager. The item before you tonight is a revised design of the project from Inversion Design Build for the city and city-owned property at First and Pine. City staff have been working with the developer and our legal, and their legal councils, uh, on a set of agreement documents in your packet that will protect the city's interest in maintaining affordability on the townhome properties throughout the required period. These documents include an overall affordable housing agreement, covenants for the entire development, and the individual lots, um, and the homeowners association documents that require reporting from the HOA, and include the city's interest in the property as part of the HOA bylaws. The agreement, the agreements also establish requirements for homeowners to work with a selected property management company, um, or one that provides at least the same level of tenant income screening, uh, and reporting for their individual rental units, to ensure all units are available to up to eighty percent AMI households. Um, you also have a letter summarizing the proposed changes from Inversion Design Build, um, to their revised plans for the site, which Inversion will present in more detail. Inversion presented their revised plans to the Affordable Housing Commission on March 5th. The Affordable Housing Commission was excited about maintaining the innovative project and the overall site design, um, and recommended it for council approval. The Affordable Housing Commission did not discuss the revised timeline in their, uh, meeting, and expressed in their initial recommendation, a push for additional affordable units, uh, on the property as soon as possible. Inversion Design Build, uh, met with city departments for a pre-application meeting on March 13th, which covered the required planning permits, uh, and the utility and fire access considerations for the site. We are fortunate to have Nathan Poole and Inversion Design Build with us this evening to share more about their process, um, to arrive at the proposed revisions and answer your questions. Uh, staff recommends moving to authorize the city manager to sign the affordable, uh, housing agreement and related attachments as substantially similar, as we've identified a couple of small, uh, adjustments with Inversion Design Build for the property contribution at First and Pine.
in your packet, but it's just sort of a highlight list of the things that were originally proposed, uh, and have been updated in this new proposal, uh, just to kind of give you a quick sense of, of where it was and where it's at now. Um, I want to start off by thanking city council for, uh, the opportunity to work, uh, on this project. Doing something new is never easy. Just didn't want to have to hunch over there that whole time. Uh, and, um, uh, we've been, uh, thrilled with the level of enthusiasm that we have gotten, both from, uh, city staff, uh, and from banks, from, uh, regulators, from, uh, everyone that we've approached with this. Uh, we, almost every meeting is end with, you know, how can we help? How else can we make this happen? We, uh, have three kind of basic components that we were, uh, told to, um, go forth with after, uh, the last city council approval. Uh, the first was, uh, putting together an agreement with the city, which is in your packet now, uh, which we're, uh, hoping to get approved here soon. The second is putting together a budget, and the third is the design. Um, I'd like to, uh, talk a little bit about the second two here. One, our original proposal, we had a site plan that had twelve stacks of three units, and the idea was that we were going to sell a stack of units and have two rental units that supplemented the income of the new homeowner. And all of the units would be restricted to, uh, residents who were earning eighty percent of the area median income or less. Uh, that is explicitly allowed in FHA home lending requirements. Uh, in initial conversations with banks, they said, yes, this is doable. When we brought the actual approved city, uh, proposal to banks, they said, you don't have anywhere else in this area that you've done this before. We said, well, no, it's new. They said, well, if you don't have comparables, then we can't underwrite it. And so, we had to go back to our design, uh, and take a closer look at what we could do that actually had comparables in this community that we could work with. Fortunately, uh, we have a fantastic design staff, and they were able to figure out a new solution that really maintained the spirit of this project and is bankable, so we can actually get home mortgages for the future owners for these. So, originally, this was twelve stacks of three units, or thirty-six units. We now have fifteen stacks on the site, and these are townhomes with an attached accessory dwelling unit. And that is, uh, typology that is, uh, much more common and bankable, and we've actually been able to find several banking partners that have down payment assistance for programs that can work with us to, uh, make sure that we can make these units affordable for the, the future owners. We also like the changes that have happened to the units themselves. Uh, originally, we had all one-bedroom units. Now, we have one bedroom unit that's fully accessible on the ground floor, and one two-bedroom unit above. That allows us to be able to serve families. It allows this stack to be able to grow and change and flex as a family situation changes, so it'll be a much more stable situation for the residents, uh, and the, the future owners on the site, regardless of how their, their life situation changes over time. Because we, uh, changed the unit count, we were actually able to change the parking layout as well. So, rather than eating up a good chunk of the site plan, uh, for parking, we can now put all of the parking along the alleyway, which gives us a little bit more open space on site. And, um, uh, we, we like that shift as well. All in all, um, the, uh, the plan is really maturing into something that, that is viable. And like I said, we've mentioned, we've, uh, do, uh, we have now, as of today, we actually have an MOU together with a nonprofit called Homesite, uh, that's going to be the, uh, nonprofit development partner for this. What that does is it unlocks funding that we can use that has a much lower interest rate for the construction loan. All of the interest rates, as you know, is a very touch-and-go situation in development world, so anytime we can access something with a lower interest rate, that's something that allows us to keep these more affordable for the tenants. Um, I think that's it for me. Yes, Homesite, uh, is, they're not only a partner for, uh, the development, but they, uh, they have, um, probably one of the most amazing down payment assistance programs we've seen. Uh, they offer up to $35,000 in down payment assistance to future owners. They also have several programs, uh, for financial education for first-time homebuyers, both on the front end, before they purchase the home, and then also continuing homeownership counseling, uh, which is really critical when you're trying to keep people from a foreclosure situation, having partners that are, uh, seeing potential issues and being able to, to address those, uh, before they become, uh, a problem for the, for the homeowner. Thank you.
Thank you. Council any questions?
Again, I have one.
For who? For who?
Consultant. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I, I did have a question on the, um, your new sheet, the current, and the, so now parking is described as off alley. Could, are your, uh, site plan, uh, sheet A100 that you had up a minute ago? I was just gonna ask, I, I, I saw the, uh, so parking off the alley, I assume it's the east side of the parcel, and the dark shaded area is identified, I couldn't quite read it, but I think it says a planting strip, is that right? Is that what that's, the dark rectangle is?
It's a gray strip going.
Right there. So, the alley is to the right of the hat, and then the planting strip, is that basically? Yeah. Alley runs up and down on the right.
Yes, the alley runs right. I don't know if you can see my cursor on that.
Yeah, I can. So, my question is, I, I see the planting strip, and I see the alley, but I don't see the parking. Am I missing it?
The parking is, this is the parking right here.
In the planting strip.
That, that is the parking. This is the planting strip. There's, there are intermittent planting strips that are required per your city's parking, uh, ordinance.
Okay.
And I think that's what you're seeing is called out there.
That sounds good. I was going by the legend, the black box in the legend, I think reads planting strip.
It's green.
Is that, oh, it's just a screen issue?
Yeah.
Okay. If you've got it covered, Dave, I think I'll. It must be. Okay, thank you. I'm good, thanks.
Any other questions, Senator? Questions of staff? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this issue? Three-minute deal.
Hello, my name's Sarah Haven, and I live close to this property, and my question is exactly what, um, Mr. Miller brought up about parking. So, I know it's a lot to contend with a project this big, and I'm sure it looks pretty to have it all in the back. My concern is safety, that you've got two bordering streets that can manage traffic coming in both directions, and you hope to push all of that vehicle traffic down a one-way, unpaved, you could go on and on, um, alley. So, I have a lot of concern about safety, because I live in that area, and I drive in that area a lot, and I already have other concerns about how much traffic there might be in that area. So, I just urge council to consider that in the design factor, and make sure, whatever those, um, needs are, that I can begin to comprehend where you're going over, safety and whatnot are considered when it comes to the parking in that area. Again, I know it looks pretty, but, um, safety's an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak?
Hi, Adrienne Donoghue in Kidittas County, I'm, the county, yes. Um, I guess my, my question is, is when I think of an attached ADU, an additional dwelling unit, you know, I think that's another opportunity for renting, so if I own it, and I have an additional, additional ADU, I can then rent it to somebody else, and that's going to help supplement my income, right? So, then that brings it from each unit, it was fifteen units, now we're up to totaling thirty units, which each unit would have at least two cars, right? And now, that, and now that makes three, because you, whether it's failed or not, whether college students or not get in there, so doesn't feel like, with thirty-six to forty-five rooms, doesn't feel like you have enough space for cars. And like she said, you're gonna, you're gonna, I mean, it's beautiful. I love it. I love your layout, love your design, wish I was in college, I would have loved that. But I just, my concern is, and I'm, I'm even sure the police department is, like, where are we gonna put all these people? Where are they gonna park? Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jennifer Patterson, Kidittas County, again. I agree with everybody's statements on the parking, and, um, since my son works for waste management, I wonder where you're going to even put your refuse facility. So, in addition to all that, you're gonna have a lot of necessity for access for the garbage guys.
Anybody else? Counsel? Nobody on the computer, right? Go.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna move to authorize the city manager to sign the affordable housing agreement and related attachments, as attached, and they were in substantially similar form for Inversion Design Build for the city property contributions of First and Pine, based on the revised project proposal.
Second.
Motion second to authorize the city manager to sign the affordable housing agreement, uh, in our packet with Design Build, uh, for the First and Pine, and includes the contribution of the property by the city. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, uh, I want to speak to this. Uh, for those that aren't aware, I also serve on the Affordable Housing Commission, uh, so thank you for this. This was actually one of the requests that I had for discussion, as far as the difference between the original and what we have currently. Um, to a couple of the quick points that were made during his presentation, this comes down to, unfortunately, within construction, these are the unforeseen's that a lot of times come up, and nobody likes unforeseen stuff that happens. They came to Affordable Housing Commission, they came to city council with the original proposal, based upon the concept. When you go to the banks, and the bank says, we're not gonna fund your concept, it needs to be something that's comparable, any of you that work in real estate understand what that's like. Comparables is the only way you're gonna get to underwriting. So, they had to go back, essentially redesign, to make it fit within something that could be funded, and hence why they brought it back to the Affordable Housing Commission to go through, and watch you see here. It's unfortunate they had to go through that process, but it is what it is, there's very little that you can do to change that. The best that they can do is try to maximize the space as much as possible, so that you can generate enough resident, revenue, uh, if you're a building owner, and you have that, uh, additional ADU. To a couple of comments that I heard, yes, I do understand the concern as far as the surface parking versus the parking off alley. Uh, if you remember the original one, the surface parking was actually enclosed in, within the buildings themselves. So, the same sister, same concern as far as safety still was prominent. I will say that this is still early in the design concept phase, this is about, this is about the ability to get funding. Things like safety will have to be addressed. Those are things that will, will be looked at. So, we talked about this during Affordable Housing Commission, is ensuring that we've got lighting off the building to be able to go into that parking area, so you ensure that it's safe for pedestrians, and obviously, there's gonna be more discussion about it as we go along in the concept, to ensure pedestrians are safe. Um, they're gonna have to address refuse. Um, the other part of this that I heard was the amount of parking relative to the amount of. of units. Even in the original design, there wasn't enough parking spaces where you could facilitate two cars per unit. And that's deliberately so in some of our coding. The reason why we do that is so that we can encourage more square footage on a property as opposed to street parking. The reason why is we're trying to get bodies into houses, not worry much about as cars because, quite frankly, somebody that's in the house is no longer sleeping in a car. So yes, it does mean some constraints possibly on parking, but does it accomplish some of the city goals as far as affordable housing and bringing that to our community? That's the sacrifice that has to be made with that balance. So I understand some of those concerns that were out there, but that's why the Affordable Housing Commission is supportive of it and why I'm supportive of the changes that are proposed to this. If you're still concerned about what's going on, and we've asked Inversion to continue to make updates to us about this process, especially if it comes to safety, refuse, those things, I encourage you, as I always do, to be participate in any of your local commissions. Those are available to you. They're publicly held. Yes, there are some different times, but you can always work with them. You can always contact them and ask them those questions directly. So those are my comments.
Additional comments? Counsel? I guess we're ready to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, two of what I opposed. That motion passes. Item 11B, page 243. Oh, that was 102 pages. This is an amendment to the Chamber Agreement for Concierge Services and Visitor Information Center at Unity Park. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Good evening, counsel. Mayor Elliott, Kelly Vandenberg's the Arts and Economic Development Manager for the City of Ellensburg. Tonight you have before you an amendment to the City Council Chamber of Commerce Agreement with the City of Ellensburg to add concierge services for the visitor center at Unity Park. We would like to do this to not only enhance the visitors' experience in Unity Park, but as you heard CEO of the Kiddatass County Chamber speaker earlier, Amy McGuffin, they have an extensive experience in managing visitor center, and I think their services would bring a level of professionalism into the park and help direct and guide tourists into some of the offerings within our community, within our downtown, and within our historic districts, as well as our creative district. Some of the background on this, in 2000, excuse me, in November of 2024, the issued issued the city issued an RFP and Kiddatass County Chamber of Commerce was selected from that process. Under the current agreement, the chamber manages the visitor center at 609 North Main Street. This amendment is is an amendment to the current PSA as defined by section 12 as extra work within that agreement. Further, on March 5th, at the city's Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, the committee set out and reviewed and reviewed the scope of work and makes the recommendation for counsel this evening for review. That recommendation would be that the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee makes and the staff asks counsel to move to approve the Amendment 1 to the Professional Services Agreement between the City of Ellensburg and the Kiddatass County Chamber of Commerce for Concierge Services at Unity Park and the visitor centers information at Unity Park and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement.
Counsel, any questions of staff? Anybody from the audience wish to speak? Okay, counsel.
Mr. Mayor, I move as recommended by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to approve Amendment 1 to the Professional Service Agreement between the City of Ellensburg and Kiddatass County Chamber of Commerce for Concierge Services at the Visitor Information Center in Unity Park and authorize the city manager to sign the amendment.
Second.
I'm only repeating that we are voting on signing an agreement with the chamber to manage the concierge service at the information center. Any discussion?
Any none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, two of what I opposed. That motion passes. Page 250, item 11C, this is a Reeser Creek Levy Project Update and request to proceed. There will be an opportunity for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, Drew. I'm not a techie guy. Glad you did that for me. Tonight, I'm gonna, my name's John Marlby, by the way, Public Works. I've been here many times about this project over the course of about probably 12 to 14 years. But tonight, I'm gonna take you back to 2010 to present, and I'm gonna do this in about five or 10 minutes. So in your packet, I'm not gonna read through all the background summary. I've got my own bullet points. I'm gonna bring in at maybe the 30,000 foot level, but I'm gonna try to. Some of some of you that are new to the council, take you back and then bring you forward. So the long term goal of this project has always been, since 2010, to remove the threat of flooding to to the residents of West Ellensburg. That was the number one goal, and it still is the number one goal. Projects of this scale, the complexities in trying to reach consensus with Department of Ecology, Washington State Fish and Wildlife, Federal Fisheries, Trout Unlimited, Washington Water Trust, Mid Columbia Conservation District, and the Army Corps, they were all basically my bosses. And I had 30 people as advisories to me on this project, and not everyone always agrees on everything all the time, and you can get pulled 50 different directions. But I must say this, this project landed on my desk in 2014, and it felt like for every step forward, I had to take three or four backwards. And Nancy will remember that because she's been with me the entire way. It has not been easy, but we keep inching forward every year to that goal of getting this system built to protect the residents of West Ellensburg. In 2010, I'm gonna, if you can see my cursor, in 2010, the yellow and black check line was the setback levy that was built. And also Reeser Creek, which used to be in a straight line. And if you know anything about creeks, they don't like straight lines and they don't like 90 degree turns. That was part of the flooding problem. Reeser Creek was built a brand new channel with all new fish habitat, with all those entities that I mentioned a few minutes ago. They were very much a part of that project. And this setback levy, once completed, was a success. We have people who actually live in that neighborhood that work in work at City Hall, and they have not flooded since, and they've had many opportunities to flood, and that was a major successful project. The dream back then was to get that setback levy built up all the way up to University Way to be able to continue that success and stop the flooding in West Ellensburg. What happens here, if you can follow my cursor, this is Reeser Creek, this is Courier Creek. Look, they're coming in at 90 degree angles, and they meet up with the mill ditch. This is the blowout point. In a bad rain on snow event, 100 year event, that water wraps around the Andersons on both directions. It would come down here this way, and it wouldn't have any way to cross Dollar Way. It would then run along all the businesses and the homes along here, all the way down to Fifth and Railroad. So half of the project got built in 2010, but the dream was to continue that project on its way up to to stop the flooding once and for all. In 2014, we applied for a grant to a Department of Ecology Flood Plains by Design, and all parties agreed to this. They all signed letters of support for this grant. Back then, the alignment was agreed upon, and with that project, we were going to run the levy, this red line, that was the old alignment, up to University Way. With that, we would reconstruct all of Reeser and Courier Creek so they don't come in at 90 degree angles. This is all the Yakima Nation's property. We were gonna do a very large woody debris project with them, which they were very happy about for Reeser Creek. They wanted that. We were gonna fix what is called the Abulsion Head Cuts in the Lake, another part of the flooding problem. And midway through this project, another project started called the Wilson Nanum Cherry Assessment. This is a one year project to look at what was the best way to get Steelhead up into the into the Nanum Canyon. And the chosen route was Whiskey Creek. Well, if you build a levy over here, the red line, that alignment, that doesn't help with flooding if you bring Whiskey Creek in right here. This is Whiskey Creek right here, and it would someday come coming in through this flood swelle, I'll talk about here in a minute. So that became the chosen route, and the the idea of the alignment, the red line, was not as popular. But you gotta remember, that was a grant funded project. We had deliverables, we had to design it, we had to permit it, and unfortunately, the powers that be, that project never got built. And we were convinced by all the entities that I told you about earlier, those 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 folks, to begin working with Trust for Public Lands, to see about buying this 56 acres, and then someday the dream Whiskey Creek could come through to meet the Wilson Nanum Cherry Assessment. So we began to work with Trust for Public Lands. We submitted two grants to Flood Plains by Design to try and purchase this property through grant money. And both both attempts in Flood Plains by Design's actually helped us write one of the applications. Both of those temps, it didn't fly. So we did have some money left over from the original project, and from that, we bought these four business lots along Enterprise Way. With that, we did a boundary line adjustment with Shane Jump for no cost. He had the two bottom parcels. We traded him that land for where someday maybe Cold Storage will be built. That gave us the six business lots that we needed to run the new alignment, which would be this red and black dash line right here. Through that, I had to dissolve a business park. I had to do a lot of things I'd never done before. It was exciting work. I enjoyed it. But we also became the owner of a pump station, didn't know it, and now we're in the irrigation business and deliver water as a part of that project. So the promise was always to buy, and it happened right in this room. The promise was that we would purchase the land, we would build the flood swales, we would build the new fish passable flood conveyance bridge, which was just built two years ago, and that's this little orange dot here. We would do that if others would look into bringing Whiskey Creek in at some point on their own dollar, do their own flood modeling, and then we would provide the the infrastructure. The idea of Whiskey Creek coming through, honestly, I thought it'd be 30, 40 years down the road before something like that would ever happen. Actually, it's been being worked on behind the scenes the last year or so with Burlington Northern, and it's probably gonna happen a lot faster than we originally thought. Also, along the way, when I closed out the grant with Ecology for these business lots, they asked me to do some shovel probing. I hired someone, they found something, and that cost me almost three years, and it has a Smithsonian site number. So I hired another consultant, Plateau, which is recognized as one of the best in the state. They came on board and worked with DAP, Department of Archaeology and Historical Preservation. They completed 360 shovel probes of all the 56 acres and all those business lots and did not find anything. So with DAP's approval, we can now extend the levy with with monitoring, with with Plateau's and, you know, all the stuff that they do. We've been approved by DAP to go ahead and move forward with that. Some little setbacks happened. We had to design the bridge not once but twice because FEMA changed the flood maps, and that for Reeser Courier Creek, that happens often. You don't anticipate it, but it did. In 2022, the county committed $1 million to the project from the flood district. The design was done, the bridge was built, and then the fast tracking I talked about a minute ago with Whiskey Creek, that threw off all of our flood modeling, and we lost three feet of freeboard, which is what you need to certify things. So prior to that, 2014, the freeboard was one foot. And so FEMA changes those rules often, and you don't you don't know when they're gonna do it. So at this point tonight, the journey since 2014 is over. We made it this far. I'm surprised. I was very happy when the 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 bridge was put in a couple of years ago. That really is a big dynamic dynamic part of the project because all that floodwater that used to come down here and it couldn't get across Dollar Way and run along the homes and businesses now has an outlet to to get that water through. Once the levy is constructed, and these are flood swales, by the way, they pick up the the overland flow of water. They're about 100 feet wide and three feet deep. This floodswell right here will probably become the new Whiskey Creek Channel. We made the journey this far. I've gotten through the DAP process, the cultural resource problem, which really set me back. We're ready to go out to bid, and with 10 weeks of employment left, I would like to see that happen. Now I'm not a voice.
Counsel, questions of staff?
John, first of all, this is one heck of a swan song project for you, man. So thank you for the years of service to the city. Really, the only question I have is going back to Whiskey Creek. You kind of mentioned that's being expedited. We don't anticipate the levy plan that you're currently showing changing based upon that. So at least what we're showing right there should still stay current.
If I change that, certain people would be very upset with me. That's the alignment that it's gonna be.
And congratulations getting through the DAP and historical process because that is, you can't control what's under the dirt, folks. Let me tell you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to thank John. I've been through, it's been a long road.
It has been.
Some of us have been along for the ride.
I was not gray back then.
No, you weren't. You had more hair, I think, like me. But yeah, we watched and you did. So from a council member's perspective, we couldn't have done it without you. So thank you.
There's there's no I in team, but there's an I in win. It was a team effort, all the way from everyone, from Ryan and Derek and everybody else, so and you guys.
So John, there is one question that I have here, and that's regarding the levy type and the certification associated. I had conversations with Heidi, and just for public disclosure as far as the certification around the levy, would you kind of talk about that at a high level?
So it's all built Army Corps Army Corps standards, both the bottom 2010 and the one that we want to do. It's been designed to those standards. It'll be approved by Army Corps. If FEMA were to ever change the freeboard requirement and go back to one foot, which they've done before, then you can readdress certification. Right now, it's probably gonna not happen, but you gotta remember, the goal from day one really wasn't certification, it was to get this built and stop the flooding in West Ellensburg. And we've been extremely lucky the last couple of years. Knock on wood. I don't know what next year brings, but you know, a couple of years ago, and we had that three or four feet of snow overnight, and it melted nicely back up the mountain, and we didn't have a problem. We've been very lucky the last three years. And so in terms of certification, you can always keep that on the table. That can always be done at another time, but right now, you can't certify it unless you get it built. So we need to do that process next.
Right.
And get that done, and then I would keep certification on the table.
Sure. And this is more of an education for the folks. The levy accomplishes what we want is trying to keep West Ellensburg dry and keep it from flooding. So as you mentioned, federal governments can change these rules, these boundaries, the field goal posts on us at any point, but as far as doing best for our community, this accomplishes it. So again, thank you, John, to you and the entire staff for all your work behind this.
I just wanna, I'm not sure it was mentioned, so certification means that anyone that's protected by the levy doesn't have to pay flood insurance.
Correct.
But what I wanted to point out was, just as we're reflecting back, that lower levy created that, well, I'm gonna back up. When I first came on council, that's that was our industrial area, it was all zoned, light industrial, and nothing ever happened. No buildings were built because it was in the floodplain. And and so we built that lower levy, and now we have industrial properties along Dollar Way. And so the area that's being protected is if it is taken out of the floodplain, if it if that levy can get certified and it gets taken out of the floodplain, then that opens up more possibilities for that more economic opportunity for that land.
Yep. Yep. You could change your zoning on that from light industrial to something else. Yeah, don't take certification off the table. Just let's get it built, and then we'll.
Yeah.
Counsel, any other questions of staff? Anybody in the audience? You have to come to the microphone, answer, ask the question.
Chris Carlson, Kiddatass. I've lived in a floodplain before, and you can't fill and all that. What's with Winco Foods? Was that considered a flood area?
I'm not able to answer that.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if that's
That's not
Because they take, oh, okay, but that area is all part of this flood mitigation, right? All the way down to?
Yeah, but not part of this project specifically.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Is
Um, is your expansion, does that have anything to do with the farmers that are out there that are still irrigating and they've got water rights?
Speaking of Mike, Theresa. Yeah, Theresa, you have to speak into the microphone so everybody can hear, nobody can hear you in the audience.
That doesn't change that.
There are some farmers out there still ranching, and they have water rights and deeds, and I want to make sure that this doesn't put them in peril and they have to get attorneys again.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize staff to bid the Research Creek Levy Project for full completion in the final phase.
Very good.
Motion second to authorize staff to bid the project for, uh, the Research Creek Levy Project for, uh, completion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A two vote aye opposed. That motion passes item 11B, 254 in the package, this is packet, this is an employment agreement, uh, with Buddy Stanovich, and there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Heidi Behren, Serna Way City Manager, you have before you an employment agreement, um, with Mr. Buddy Stanovich for the Energy Services Director position. Um, while it is in the full authority for the city manager to appoint and hire staff, um, one thing I'd like to do is actually to create, um, some additional terms that protect the city and protect, um, also the employee through an employment agreement. Um, the, as you recall, this is a new position for us. This is created through reorganization of the Public Works and Utilities Department. Through the budget process, we've taken a number of steps, um, to create some new capacity to really help, um, protect and advance our energy utilities, um, through, um, through some additional resources. And so, I know Buddy is here tonight. There he is, and so Buddy might want to share a couple of words.
Thank you, Buddy. Uh, good evening, Mayor, uh, council members, fellow community members. Uh, it's an honor to stand for you tonight as the proposed Energy Services Director. Uh, for the past 10 years, I've been serving, uh, I've had the privilege of serving this community, uh, within our, our energy utilities. Uh, we have a very talented team and, uh, really looking forward to the work that's ahead. Um, I'm deeply committed to this role, uh, in further advancing the city's goals, and, uh, I look forward to continuing that work with the city manager, fellow departments, this council, the community, and our customers. And, uh, appreciate the opportunity.
Counsel, any questions of Mr. Stanovich? Congratulations. Is there any comments from the audience? Okay, so...
I guess I would just say, when you see us next time, you don't have to wear a suit jacket. Appreciate the effort. I'm sure all, I speak for all of us.
You gotta get that back to the store, son.
Okay, so the suggested motion is to authorize the city manager to sign the employment agreement before us.
Is that a motion?
No.
Well, I, I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor, that we authorize city manager to sign the employment agreement with Mark Buddy Stanovich outlining terms as the city's Energy Services Department Director.
Second.
We have motion second to authorize city manager to sign the employment agreement with Buddy Stanovich for Energy Services Director. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, this is just a comment. I will abstain from this simply because since I work with Buddy, uh, as a representative of the, uh, Central Washington University, we are the largest energy user in the city, and so just for pure sake of conflict of strength, of, of interest on this, I'm gonna abstain, but I am fully supportive of Buddy in that position. He has the city's best interests in mind.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Buddy for all the leadership you've provided. I can't think of a better person to fill this role, and congratulations.
Okay. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
A two vote aye opposed. That motion passes. Congratulations. Um, item 12A, page 266, this is the manager's report, uh, and we're actually effectively done with public comment.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, I have a fairly long list here, and I will not review all of the materials in the manager's report in your packet. Um, I will remind folks that we do have a, a date for the joint city-county meeting, and that is May 8th, and I believe we will be hosting that here in the council chambers. Um, there are a couple items from Waste Management, one is Spring Cleanup Days. I believe that starts, um, the 5th of April, goes through the 12th. If folks don't have the ability to self-haul, um, due to a disability, um, please contact our Public Works Department. We can make arrangements for a pickup. Um, and then also some Arbor Day events coming up on April 12th, um, in, uh, service projects. And, uh, we're hosting as part of the Waste Management Franchise Agreement, um, they've offered a recycling event, and so in partnership with the Environmental Commission, um, there is a, a community recycling event scheduled for April 26th, and that will be in the parking lot just south of the Hell Homes, um, and library. And more details on that, there's also a flyer in your packet for that. Um, and then just as a, um, on the dais tonight, you should have a, several things. One is the Kiddatas County Railroad History Association, and so council looked at, um, this is a miniature railroad. Um, this is a nonprofit group. We've been working together with them to look at an opportunity for them to build a site at Rotary Park. It's part of the master plan. Um, we have some early, we've had some early discussions with them. There are, uh, construction, um, agreements and some operational agreements that will come your way in the future. They are applying for a grant, and, um, and so on the dais, we've had a request, um, they're applying for a BNSF grant and have requested a letter of support from the city, so I would request council's support. And again, uh, you have some background information, um, don't want anybody to be surprised when you saw a flyer, um, from them, um, saying, um, there's a potential mini railroad at, um, at Rotary Park. So, I would, uh, request council's approval for the letter of support.
Formal approval or consensus?
Consensus.
Consensus? Is anybody opposed to me signing this letter?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. And a couple more items. Um, we have two additional letters of support. Um, the mayor received a request from the city of South Clealum. They are applying for a, a congressionally-directed spending, um, grant from, through Senator Cantwell's office, and also the same through Senator Murray's office to construct, um, some parts of their, um, water system. So...
So just, just briefly, um, as a representative of COG, and, and the le, the letter is inaccurate. I am not the chair of COG, so, uh, we'll have to fix that before we sign the letters. Um, but this, this is a project that was discussed, um, at COG, and we're trying to be regionally supportive. That doesn't necessarily mean I think you should vote one way or the other, but, um, they have to fix the letter if I'm gonna sign both of them, and I just need your direction. Consensus? Again, consensus? Is anybody opposed, assuming the letters are accurate, to signing these?
I'd, yeah, I'd say definitely, even, maybe we can even promote you to the, uh, Chair of COG in the process about that.
So I'm not gonna sign these, I'll get clean copies.
It runs in the family, though. The chair position.
Excellent. Okay, and then a couple more items. Um, the Kiddatas County Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a State of the Community Address. They're gonna try a lunchtime event, and the tentative date is April 17th, and when we receive those materials, I will forward those to folks. And they're going to focus, and, um, they think they're trying to have the location be in that, the Clealum Senior Center. So, um, tentatively mark your calendars, and we'll get more information out. Um, the mayor did receive a request, as you know, it's the 200th anniversary of the U.S. coming up here, um, and there are celebrations that will start happening sometime this year. And so, um, more to come at your next meeting after we confirm some details. And then finally, um, I would like to note that this is our city attorney Weiner's last formal council meeting, and so he's retiring at the end of the month. We will be having, uh, a, a community celebration for him on the 28th, and he'll be receiving some information about that. It'll be later in the afternoon here in the council chambers to celebrate Terry's 12 years with the city and a lifetime of public service, and so...
And so we don't receive complaints, it's the 250th anniversary?
Two five zero.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, if we can go relatively quickly, we're gonna do, uh, council member reports ahead of the agenda, or excuse me, ahead of the executive session, because I don't know that people want to stay for adjournment after an executive session. So I'll start with Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, um, attended, uh, Parks Commission. Uh, it was nice to get those meetings back going. We had some quorum issues with not having a full commission, so those are back and running, which is good. I'm gonna be attending the Landmarks Commission. It got moved, is now this week, and so I'll be, uh, reporting back on that. And I also need to request a, uh, absence for June 2nd. I will be out of the country, so it'll be difficult to attend.
I will be as well.
So moved.
So it was for both?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a motion second to do excused absences for Councilmember Thompson and myself for June 2nd. We, actually, I'll try to attend in, online, so, but I'll not be present. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Anything else? Josh?
Uh, no, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Palmer? Affordable Housing Commission, we already talked about the first at Pine, and, uh, for those that weren't here last week, our, our last, uh, committee meeting, we talked about Pathways Project. Uh, we approved essentially the master plan, so that entire math, uh, Pathways Project is gonna be starting up. We're very excited about that. Steer I-90, uh, is the discussion, especially about upper county impacts, uh, to the possible expansion of I-90. Uh, they do have concerns as far as the transportation budget cuts that are being discussed at the state level. It is free to join any of their meetings, just type in steer I-90 in Google, and you could sign up to be at one of their next meetings, just to kind of hear the updates. It's gonna be following the legislative session, so you can sit back and wait until the end of probably April, and we'll have a good idea of, if there's an impact there. Law and Justice meets, Law and Justice Council meets on Wednesday, so no updates there. Solid Waste Commission, uh, we haven't had a meeting yet. Kitcom meeting, thanks for allowing me to be part of that, that was pretty, pretty cool. Um, this is more to citizens. I heard conversations regarding the concern for natural gas and what that means for impact. Just to remind everyone, in November, uh, voters voted to, uh, decline the mandate that rural communities automatically go off on natural gas. Now, there's obviously follow-up impacts associated with that. If you're interested as far as the local impacts, you can always participate in a Utility Advisory Committee, which is another subcommittee within a city. I'm also on that. That happens on Thursday, and there's actually a, a meeting this Thursday, if you're interested in, uh, participating in that. And that's all I have.
Councilmember Miller?
Well, let's see, uh, attended, um, PTAC meeting, the Transit Advisory Committee, and, uh, the current, uh, work that the committee's doing is to, uh, come up with a recommendation to counsel on, uh, transit funding, uh, for a future ballot measure to take to the public, because as many in the community know, our current, um, voter-approved, um, sales, two tenths of one percent sales tax will expire in 2026, so it needs to be, if we're going to have a transit system, we're going to need to renew some funding or ask the public to, to consider that. Um, I dropped in, sat in on the Ellensburg Academy last week. It was a, uh, interesting, um, presentation from staff, kind of the nuts and bolts of city government operations. I thought it was, it was reasonably well-attended, and, uh, I think it was an effective, effective event. Um, also attended the Arts Commission, and then, um, I missed the Planning Commission meeting because I had a conflict, and then PTAC is meeting in tomorrow to formulate our recommendation, the committee's recommendation to counsel.
What time is that PTAC meeting?
3:30. In the conference room.
Councilmember Lillquist?
Yeah, um, so, the mayor, Nancy Goodlow, and I attended, um, a meeting of the Yakima Nation, uh, and we came away with a number of initiatives that, um, that we could potentially work together on. Um, attended a Kiddatas County Airport Advisory Committee meeting, um, the Citizen Academy, uh, which, you, if folks are interested in how, how our government works, how our local government works, there will be more of those, so, and there's, there's a lot of different ways to, to stay posted on the city's main page. If you look for the button that says Get Alerts, um, you can sign up for getting notifications about what the city's doing. Um, the, uh, I attended the Transportation Safety Open House, um, more than just a few people were there, so that, it was a decent turnout. And the Odd Fellows had their pilgrimage for youth. Um, they selected four, four or five, um, high school students to, uh, to go to Washington, DC and Philadelphia and, and learn about, um, and the United Nations and, and just learn, uh, about government. Um, so it's a good opportunity for them. Um, I have had others ask me, what is this, what is the city going to do when it loses federal funding? Um, and I, and I, to my knowledge, we have not been notified that we have lost any federal funding, correct? Um, so I'm not, I, I think it's premature to, to second guess, like I think Delano said, but, um, might it be, uh, useful to prepare a list of what kinds of federal funding we do rely on? Um, I mean, that was, at the Citizen Academy, that, 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 that was, um, highlighted in the transportation, uh, section. So, I just, um, you know, to put that out there, this, this is, I don't know if it's at risk or not. I, I don't know. Uh, there's just so much uncertainty. But, but it is true that, uh, we do rely on a lot of federal funding. Um, and, and identifying that for folks might, or might not be useful. Um, just for closure, is there consensus that we could ask the, the city staff to, um, to contact the flagpole owner and, um, negotiate an agreement to fly the, the Tree City flag? Or is there any opposition?
I have no issue with it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
The fourth and Ruby, private, private flagpole to fly our flag?
That's it. That's we're good.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy Goodlow?
Yeah. Uh, pretty busy week, like, like last week. Uh, we had a DEI Commission meeting. I met with, uh, city manager and city staff with the developers, uh, who are building all the houses and homes in our community. Uh, good conversation, um, a very good conversation about affordable housing and the problems and issues that confront those developers when they try to do that, and I appreciated that perspective. That was something I had not, was not aware of. Um, attended the Ellensburg Academy. If you haven't done that, it's a wonderful opportunity for you to, uh, learn about our city, particularly from the standpoint of, uh, financing and how we, uh, do our budget and what, what, what pots pay what bills and how we balance a budget, uh, every two years. Uh, so I would encourage anybody who hasn't attended that meeting to do that. It's also a really good opportunity for you to provide input, uh, to the city on some things that you are interested in. Uh, we had, uh, our last meeting of the season of the Cold Weather Action Team, um, and we'll see what the future brings for that. Uh, and yes, I did go with the Yakima Nation with the mayor and Councilmember Lillquist, and it was a really nice day, and we had a, a very good discussion. Looking forward to working with them on some things. Um, I'd like to end my comments with a comment on the two proclamations that are on the agenda for today, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Uh, one of the proclamation is for Transgender Day of Visibility on March 31st. Um, you can read the pro, uh, proclamation if you would like. This is a, this is a, a proclamation that is done, uh, at the national level, uh, and many, many cities also do that. "Transgender persons are people who dare to live with honesty, integrity, and authenticity in a world that consistently challenges their very existence. They bring talent and skills and experience to the Ellensburg workforce every day. I am grateful for their contributions to this, to this community, and I salute their courage." I am grateful for their contributions to this community, and I salute their courage." And the second proclamation is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month, which is March 2025. "I'd like to give a shout out to people with disabilities living in Ellensburg. The work and contributions they make to this community every day is invaluable. As you read the proclamation, you will see that 13% of the youth in Kitatass County are counted with a disability of some kind, and the numbers are growing. I offer a salute to each person in our community living with a disability, to your strength of character and your courage to overcome your obstacles and make a difference in this world. I am grateful for the families, caretakers, schools, and agencies who support you, and I thank them for their contributions and commitments to this population."
Councilman Rochelle?
Alright, I was at the library, and so I wasn't aware of this, but the library on our city website has all of their events listed, and they have a, host a ton of fabulous free events at our library, so I encourage everybody to check that out, and also get your library cards if you don't have them. They are doing also on March 29th, Saturday, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM, a library cleanup. So if anybody's interested in removing books from shelves and dusting for a few hours, I encourage you to show up at the library and volunteer your time, they need lots of help. I was also with council member Thompson at most of the Parks and Rec Commission. I just wanted to let all of our community members know that the splash pad is a very hot topic right now, and it is on the radar, so don't think that it's not being talked about. We're working with KVH, they're a big partner in that, and getting the grant funding for them and things that... So it's very visible, just to keep everybody on the same page there. I was at Lodging Tax Commission, which we worked a lot on the agreement with the chamber that was adopted tonight, and then we're also working very closely with the county, because the grants that come out are county-wide, so they're not just Ellensburg. So we're working closely with the county to streamline that process and who's in charge of what, because it's a little bit, you know, needs some work. So we're working closely with that. I also attended the Citizens Academy, found that quite enjoyable. And then Kitcom, which is my nemesis on what to report. So staffing, again, I always lean on Mayor Rich for this, because it's his world. Staffing is coming along nicely. We're hoping that by summer we are getting more.
It'll be 50%.
50%, that's good. So the people we have in now are doing great, and they're progressing nicely, so that's good news. We mapped out some 2025 projects and goals. And then, I don't really know how to describe the partnership with Ellensburg School District and Rivercom, and it's too...
I'll do it.
There we go, he's gonna do that, thank you, Rich. I think that's where I am at, that's all.
So I'm gonna actually defer the Kitcom stuff. I've been asked to do a presentation in the next couple of meetings, whichever one's lighter, and I'll do a very brief overview of Kitcom and where we're going and how we're spending your money. Thank you. I have two items to put on the radar for the future, so, welcome to the city of Ellensburg to the new attorney, because I wanna, I wanna ask a question about short-term rentals and how we're regulating those and paying attention to them in a way, so that's not your problem. I'm not. So, and there are some public safety implications and some issues with, you know, how they're dispatched and those kinds of things. So the short-term rentals thing is something I just want to look at, and obviously I'm not advocating a specific position, but just put that on the agenda. And then this is UAC and Kitcom. Kitcom right now has a board position on, or has a committee position to represent IT, and it doesn't feel like it makes a lot of sense, and we're really not an entity that comments on the bulk of the activity that happens at UAC. So we would like to come off of that and allow somebody else in the community to sort of represent the telecommunications, maybe from a private perspective rather than from a government perspective, because I don't feel like we can really give a lot of input that's not very pragmatic, in other words, we can't be an advocate in any way. So I'd like to come off of that.
So, so the recruiting for that vacant position on UAC is on the UAC's agenda for Thursday, and I guess if we're thinking about reworking that committee's duties, I think we need to maybe pause on recruiting for that position until we decide what kind of person, or what kind of, who we want on that committee, what kinds of people we want on that committee, and what the membership would be to best serve the new duties.
And so we've had discussions about really the role and the requirements for membership, essentially, for the UAC and also for the Environmental Commission as we make some shifts to make sure all of our entities are covered, especially with the reorganization, with our energy services in one department, and then our utilities, public, you know, water, wastewater, store water in the other. So that, what we don't want to do is run into issues of quorum, and so we can talk offline about maybe how to best to address that. We may be able to put a pause on that or do a temporary fill for the, and it's, I think it's a telecom customer position, so we have some other options we can check out, too.
And it clearly made sense at the time, because we were developing the municipal area network and doing a lot of things that, you know, had a public interest. I just don't feel like we serve any purpose there, so I need to come off of that. And then the final thing is, I did participate in a limited fashion in the selection process for the city attorney.
Replacement. We are going to go into executive session for how long?
10 minutes.
And do we expect a decision?
No, we will.
So we're going into executive session per RCW 4231101Q, which is Ellensburg's law, specifically. This is to consider greenhouse gas allowance, auction, bidding, information that is prohibited from release or disclosure under RCW 70A 65108. So 10 minutes, and we're actually gonna start the session at 2140. I gotta talk to somebody in the audience before we leave. All we'll do when we come out is adjourn.